Good evening. Welcome to your City Commission meeting. Meetings are televised every day on Channel 2 at 7:00 PM at midnight and available for viewing on YouTube and Facebook Live. Due to the restriction of social distancing and prohibition of gathering of 10 or more people to mitigate the spread of COVID-19, the City Commission meeting will not be open to the public. In accordance with Kansas Open Meetings Act, the meeting can be viewed live on Channel 2 and via Facebook Live. Citizens may submit questions for the City Commission to be read during public comment, unless they are related to an agenda item. Questions on agenda items will be read during the discussion of that particular topic. And questions, if any questions were to be submitted, were to be submitted to our City Clerk, Carla Williamson, at FirstCity.org, no later than 6:00 PM today, April 14th, and the City Clerk advises me that no questions were submitted. I'd also like to let everybody know that I'm here in the city chambers with the City Manager, the City Clerk, and our Head of Strategic Planning, Ms. Julie Hurley. The four other Commissioners are remote, connected to us via GoToMeeting, and so this will be a first where I can even see all four of my fellow Commissioners, and I was thinking that it's really great timing in terms of these nice big monitors we have here in the city chambers. That was very fortuitous in terms of the timing as far as that goes. So if everyone would join me in to stand up, pledge of allegiance, followed by silent meditation, we'll go ahead and start the meeting this way. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." We do have five proclamations. I don't think they're as long as the ones last, we met three weeks ago, but I am going to read each one, and of course, nobody is here to receive from these organizations the proclamation, but they will be mailed by Ms. Williamson either tomorrow or the next day this week. The first one is for the National Library Week and City of Leavenworth, Kansas proclamation, whereas libraries are not just about what they have for people, but what they do for and with people, and whereas libraries have long served as trusted and treasured institutions and library workers and librarians fuel efforts to better their communities, campuses, and schools, and whereas librarians are leaders in their institution and organizations in their communities, in the nation, and in the world, and whereas librarians continue to lead the way in leveling the playing field for all who seek information and access to technology, and whereas libraries and librarians look beyond their traditional roles and provide transformative opportunities for education, employment, entrepreneurship, empowerment, and engagement, as well as new services that connect closely with patrons' needs, and whereas libraries, librarians, library workers, and supporters across America are celebrating National Library Week, now therefore I, Myron J. Mike Rizwell, Mayor of City of Leavenworth, Kansas hereby proclaim April 19 through 25, 2020 as National Library Week. I encourage all residents to visit, well, they're not going to visit the library this week. If they're going to visit, they'll do it virtually, but they're set up to do that, and so that's a good way to continue taking advantage of all the resources we have in our public library here. Explore what's new at your library and engage with your library because of you and library leaders, libraries transform. In witness whereof, I set my hand and affixed the Great Seal of the City of Leavenworth, Kansas this 14th day of April in the year of 2020. So that's the first one. Second one is National Child Abuse Prevention Month. City of Leavenworth, Kansas proclamation, whereas our children are our most valuable resources and will shape the future of our communities, and whereas the majority of child abuse and neglect occurs when people find themselves in stressful situations that are preventable, but without community resources and support, they don't know how to cope. And whereas child abuse and neglect not only directly harm children, but also increase the likelihood of criminal behavior, substance abuse, health problems such as heart disease and obesity, and risky behaviors such as smoking, and whereas child abuse and neglect is a community problem that can be reduced by making sure each family has the support of prevention programs created among social service agencies, schools, faith communities, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community, and whereas together we can strengthen and support families in raising their children in a safe, nurturing environment, now therefore I, Myron J. Mike Rizwell, Mayor of the City of Leavenworth, Kansas hereby proclaim April 2020 as National Child Abuse Prevention Month. In witness whereof, I set my hand and have affixed the Great Seal of the City of Leavenworth, Kansas this 14th day of April in the year of 2020. Next is a proclamation for Fair Housing Month. City of Leavenworth, Kansas proclamation, whereas the Congress of the United States passed the Civil Rights Act of 1968, of which Title VIII declared that the law of the land would now guarantee the rights of equal housing opportunity, and whereas the City of Leavenworth is committed to the mission and intent of Congress to provide fair and equal housing opportunities for all, and today many realty companies and associations support fair housing laws, and whereas the fair housing groups in the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development have over the years received thousands of complaints of alleged illegal housing discrimination and found too many that have proved upon investigation to be violation of the fair housing laws, and whereas equal housing opportunity is a condition of life in the City of Leavenworth that can and should be achieved, now therefore I, Myron J. Mike Rizwell, Mayor of the City of Leavenworth, Kansas hereby proclaim April 2020 to be Fair Housing Month and celebrating 52 years of fair housing. In witness whereof, I set my hand and have affixed the Great Seal of the City of Leavenworth, Kansas's 14th day of April in the year of 2020. Next is National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, April 12 through 18, 2020. Proclamation, City of Leavenworth, Kansas, whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services, and whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property, and whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Leavenworth Police and Fire Communications Center, and whereas public safety dispatchers are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety, and whereas public safety dispatchers of the Leavenworth Police Department have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients, and whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Now therefore I, Myron J. Mike Rizwell, Mayor of the City of Leavenworth, Kansas hereby proclaim April 13 through 17, 2020 as National Public Safety Telecommuters Week in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe. In witness thereof, I set my hand and have affixed the Great Seal of the City of Leavenworth, Kansas's 14th day of April in the year of 2020. And the fifth and last proclamation is for Arbor Day, April 24, 2020. City of Leavenworth, Kansas proclamation, whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Warden proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life, giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our home, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in the City of Leavenworth, Kansas increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, now therefore I, Myron J. Mike Rizwell, Mayor of the City of Leavenworth, Kansas hereby proclaim April 24, 2020 to be Arbor Day, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day, to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, to plant trees, to gladden the heart, and promote the well-being of this and future generations. In witness whereof, I set my hand and have affixed the Great Seal of the City of Leavenworth, Kansas's 14th day of April in the year of 2020. So these will be sent out to the representatives for the various organizations who we've provided a proclamation to, and with that, we'll go to Old Business, and the first agenda item under Old Business is consideration of previous meeting minutes. Do any of my fellow Commissioners have any comments or questions on the meeting minutes from our March 24, 2020 regular meeting?
No.
None being seen or heard? I will accept a motion on the approval of the minutes from our previous meeting.
This is Commissioner Leonhard. I move to approve the minutes from March 24, 2020, regular meeting.
There's a motion and a second on this particular agenda item. We will begin voting with Commissioner Priceinger. Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
Commissioner Leonhard.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
And aye as the mayor, vote aye. The ayes have it, the vote is five to zero. The motion carries, so we've approved the minutes from our last regular meeting on March 24th. We are into the section of New Business, and as I previously said, there are no emails that have been received by the public for public comment, so we will have no public comment as during this new business category of items. Next are Mayor Appointment. I think I've got one. So I am going to move to reappoint to the Leavenworth Preservation Commission Richard L. Gibson and Edward Otto to terms ending April 15, 2020. Could I have a second from one of my Commissioners, fellow Commissioners?
Mayor Rizwell.
I'm sorry, hold.
Just, you had said 2020, it's 2023, just for the record.
Did I say 2020?
You did.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I need to read what I'm reading, 2023. Is there a second? Commissioner Wilson, can you second?
Yes, Commissioner Wilson, I second.
Okay. There's a motion and a second to reappoint to the Leavenworth Preservation Commission Richard L. Gibson and Edward Otto to terms ending April 15, 2023. We will begin voting with Commissioner Wilson. Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson, aye.
Okay. Commissioner Leonhard?
Aye.
Commissioner Leonhard, aye.
Right. Commissioner Bowder?
Commissioner Bowder, aye.
Commissioner Priceinger?
Aye.
And aye as the mayor, vote aye. The ayes have it, the vote is five to zero, so we've reappointed these two gentlemen, Mr. Gibson and Mr. Otto, to terms ending April 15, 2020. Next is the postponement of the public hearing for 1109 Spruce Street.
City Clerk Carla Williamson will handle this item.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, you may remember that at our last meeting, we had postponed this to tonight's meeting. We were unsure whether or not we were going to be able to hold that public meeting. We're still unable to hold public hearings, excuse me, public hearings, so we are going to postpone this again to the next meeting on May 12th, and just to reiterate again, staff has been in contact with the property owner, and they are working on the property, so if everything, if we're able to, we'll hold the public meeting on May 12th. If not, we'll do another postponement.
Okay. Are there any comments or questions for the City Clerk, or the City Manager, or myself as far as this particular agenda item? If not, I'll entertain a motion for this particular agenda item.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Wilson here.
Miss, go ahead, Commissioner Wilson.
I move to postpone the public hearing on the fire damage structure at 1109 Spruce Street as unsafe or dangerous until May the 12th, 2020.
2020.
I second.
Right. Is there a second? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I second Commissioner Leonhard.
We've got a motion and a second to postpone the public hearing on the fire damage structure at 1109 Spruce Street as unsafe or dangerous until May 12, 2020. We will begin voting with Commissioner Priceinger.
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder?
Aye.
Commissioner Leonhard?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
And I vote aye as the mayor. That's, the ayes have it, the vote is five to zero, so we've approved this particular motion to postpone the public hearing. Next item is consider approval of a cereal malt beverage license for 300 North Fourth Street.
City Clerk will continue with this item.
Mayor, Commissioner, this is to consider a request for a 2020 off-premise cereal malt beverage license for Leavenworth Operations LLC located 300 North Fifth, North Fourth Street, which is the Conoco Station. This is requested due to new ownership of that business, and the Police Department has approved the license. The Fire Department, who serves as a city health inspector, generally would go out and inspect that facility to make sure, for health and safety reasons, that it's up to standard because they are not performing those tasks at this time due to the COVID-19 restrictions. They were unable to go out and do that. I did speak with Sean Kell, the Health and Safety Officer, and he felt that the location had not had any previous violations or anything with regards to health and sanitation, and felt that it would be appropriate to go ahead and approve their cereal malt beverage license, and as soon as possible, they will go out and inspect that, but felt that, and staff feels that there's no reason to hold this up for that, so staff would recommend to go ahead and approve that.
Okay. Any questions or comments from my fellow Commissioners on this particular agenda item, on this request? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
As Commissioner President, I move to approve the 2020 off-premise cereal malt beverage license for Conoco slash Leavenworth Operations LLC at 300 North Fourth Street in Leavenworth.
Is there a second?
Commissioner Wilson, I second it.
There's a motion and a second on this particular agenda item. We will begin voting with Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Commissioner Leonhard? Commissioner Priceinger?
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder?
Aye.
And aye as the mayor, vote aye, the ayes have it, the motion, the vote is, the motion is approved, five to zero, so we've approved the, this request for cereal malt beverage license as we've discussed. Next is Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding, April 14, 2020, and it's a Bureau of Justice Assistance Grant, I believe.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, Paul Kramer, City Manager. The Police Department, through the City Manager's Office, is requesting authority to apply for the Bureau of Justice Assistance Fiscal Year 2020 Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding Grant on behalf of the City of Leavenworth in the amount of $76,918. On March 31 of this year, the Police Department received communications from the Bureau of Justice Assistance that the City of Leavenworth had been allocated that amount, $76,918, to assist in preventing, preparing for, and responding to the coronavirus. It is generally designed for expenses associated with overtime, equipment, including law enforcement and medical, personal protective equipment, hiring, supplies such as gloves, masks, and sanitizer, training, and travel expenses, particularly related to the distribution of resources to the most impacted areas. The grant is retroactive till January 2020, and will have a two-year cycle. There are no City of Leavenworth funds necessary for this grant application, so we're asking tonight for the Commission to authorize the Police Department on behalf of the City of Leavenworth to apply for this grant for the fiscal year 2020. I will let the Commission know that as soon as this issue started, we started tracking expenses. We have, all department heads are tracking expenses, and Finance has set up the relevant financial and accounting systems to attract or capture all related expenses, so I'm sure we will use this as we move through the year, and these dollars help us to fray some of those costs. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Any questions or comments from my fellow Commissioners on this particular agenda item? I did just have a question in terms of the Bureau of Justice Assistance, is that a state or a federal agency?
Federal.
Federal, okay. Probably in the Department of Justice, right? Okay. I didn't know that. All right, if there are no further, no questions or comments, I will entertain a motion on this agenda item.
Commissioner Leonhard, I move to approve the authorization of the Police Department to apply for the Bureau of Justice Assistance FY 2020 Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding Grant on behalf of the City of Leavenworth for $76,918.
Is there a second?
Second, Commissioner Priceinger.
We have a motion and a second for this particular agenda item. We will begin voting with Commissioner Priceinger. Commissioner Bowder?
Aye.
Commissioner Leonhard?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
And as the mayor, I vote aye, the ayes have it. Motion carries five to zero, so we've authorized the Police Department to apply for this particular grant related to the coronavirus emergency health crisis that we're in. Thank you. Next is West Glen Third Plat Acceptance of Land for Public Use.
Item will be handled by Julie Hurley, the Director of Planning and Community Development.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Again, this is the West Glen Third Plat, we're accepting the dedication of public land, or land for public purposes as part of the final plat. This is a four-lot final plat that was originally platted as Track A as part of the West Glen First Plat back in 2017. It was rezoned to Planned Unit Development, or PUD, back in 2018 in order to facilitate the development of this property into some townhome units that will be part of this plat once it's approved. The subject property is 2.32 acres in size, and it consists of a total of four residential lots, which, with an average size of just under 21,000 square feet. Each lot will be developed with a townhome unit consisting of two units, so there'll be a total of eight residential units on this property once it's built out. Also included in this plat are the easements for public utilities and dedication of new public right-of-way. So the Planning Commission reviewed this at their April 6, 2020 Planning Commission meeting, and voted seven to zero to approve the plat. So staff would recommend that the Commission vote to accept the dedication of land for public purposes as part of this final plat, and you will see this again, we're just accepting the dedication of this land. The next step will be for the engineer to prepare full engineering drawings and submit those for review by the Public Works Department, as well as bonds and everything that's associated with that, and that will come back to the Commission to accept those actual public improvements once they've been designed and are ready to go. So if you have any questions, I can answer those for you now.
Will that, when you come back to the Commission, will that be sometime in the next few months, or?
It just depends when the developer has their engineers ready to go with those public improvements, and they'll work with our Public Works Department to get those reviewed and designed to city specifications.
Okay. Any questions or comments from my fellow Commissioners on this particular agenda item? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Commissioner Bowder?
Commissioner Bowder.
Move to accept the dedication of land for public purposes as part of this final plat.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Okay, there's a motion.
I second it, Commissioner Leonhard.
Great. There's a motion and a second for this particular agenda item. We will begin voting with Commissioner Wilson. Commissioner Leonhard?
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder?
Aye.
Commissioner Priceinger? Commissioner Priceinger?
Can you hear me? Aye.
Heard you, yeah, heard you now. Yeah, very good. And aye as the mayor, vote aye. The ayes have it, the vote is five to zero, so the, we've approved the exception of the dedication of the land for public purposes as part of the final plat for West Glen. Next agenda item, Moonlight Lake Plat, Acceptance of Land for Public Use.
Julie?
Okay, again, this is another final plat, request to accept the dedication of land for public purposes as part of this final plat. This is, as you said, the Moonlight Lake Final Plat. It's a plat for nine-lot, single-family residential development. The property is Zoned R125, which is low-density, single-family residential development. The subject property is 45.54 acres in size, and it's proposed to be divided into a total of nine residential lots with an average size of 5.1 acres. Obviously, some are much bigger than that. The property is located at 4,500 New Lawrence Road, between New Lawrence and 20th Street. So with this plat, there is no right-of-way being dedicated, but there are easements for public utilities as part of this. So again, as with the last plat, we're just accepting the dedication of that land for the public purposes, and again, these, this will come back to you once the utilities have been designed, and you will accept those public improvements at that time. So the Planning Commission did consider this at their April 6 Planning Commission meeting, and voted six to one to recommend approval of the plat, or to approve the plat, so if you have any questions, I can answer those for you.
Any questions or comments from my fellow Commissioners on this particular agenda Seeing or hearing none, I will accept or entertain a motion to accept this dedication of land.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Wilson here.
Right.
I move to accept the dedication of land for public purposes as part of the final plat.
Is there a second? Commissioner Bowder, did you second it, Commissioner Bowder?
Yes, I did.
Okay, thank you. There's a motion and a second on this particular agenda item. We're going to begin voting with Commissioner Priceinger.
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder?
Aye.
Commissioner Leonhard?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
And aye as the mayor, vote aye, the ayes have it, the vote carries five to zero, so we've approved the acceptance, the dedication of land for public purposes as part of the final plat for this Moonlight Lake, Moonlight Lake development. Next is Review and Assessment of Dangerous Structures.
Once again, this will be Julie Hurley, the Director of Planning and Community Development.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commission. As you're all familiar with by now, we, staff, part of our process that we undertake for code enforcement is that we review and assess structures that are deemed to be in an unsafe and dangerous physical condition, or cause a blinding influence on the neighborhood that they are in, and we compile a list of those structures every year that might be eligible for demolition based on criteria that are outlined in Kansas State statute. So this is our first look at the structures that we've identified for this next list. Right now, we're not looking for any sort of vote or anything on these, this is just sort of the first preliminary review, and then after tonight, assuming that the Commission has a consensus to move forward with these structures, staff will start our process in terms of obtaining title work, notifying property owners, publishing, and then we will see these back here, tentatively, at the May 26, 2020 City Commission meeting. At that time, we would approve a resolution setting a public hearing. Tentatively, the public hearing would be on July 14 of this summer, or I believe July 14 would be in July, assuming we can resume public hearing processes as normal this summer, and so we could get moving on the rest of our process with these. So this is just a first look at these, I will just go through these briefly. If there are any properties that the Commission would like to take off, we can do that, or if there are any other properties that have come up that the Commission would like us to evaluate, we can look at those as well, since we have not, again, notified anybody on these yet. So give me just a minute, and I will- So, give me just a minute, and I will get my screen shared here, I've got a PowerPoint, or if Taylor could help me with that remotely.
I have a question, this is Commissioner Bowder.
Sure.
So, you want to go through all of these, and then if we have, I have questions on a few of them, but wait till after you're done, is that what we should do?
Oh, as, as we're going through them, if you have questions on the individual property, we can just speak up and talk about them individually as we're going through, instead of holding questions.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, the screen is shared, it looks like. Can everybody see the PowerPoint presentation? There should be a picture.
Not yet.
Okay.
Slowly, very slowly.
Take your time, Julie.
I think Taylor's doing something.
Trying to figure out how to unpause it, I think.
Yeah, somehow the sharing is paused. Can anybody see the picture now?
Bill, any?
It's not on our screen.
It's not.
If any of us, if any of the commissioners have another device, if you're watching this on your, using your iPhone or your iPad, and you have an iPad or an iPhone that you're not using, it'll show up on that, but you have to have a, I've got the pictures up, but I've got a separate device, I don't know if the other commissioners have that availability.
You were trying to share the screen with the, with the remote commissioners, right? And we're not having success doing that, so I think that, I would.
Assistant City Manager Taylor Tutter is working on it, he's, he's got control of the screen, he's doing something, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's go to the, the next item.
Okay.
Come back to it.
All right, we can do that. So, the next one's a little bit easier. Resolution B 2246, One-Time Amendment to Resolution B 1185 to Provide Housing Assistance.
Mr. Mayor and Commission, this is Paul Kramer, City Manager. The stay-home order by Governor Kelly to limit the spread of COVID-19 has affected the incomes of some Leavenworth residents, especially those at or below 100, 150% of the poverty guidelines. Those who are not being paid by their employer during this crisis are struggling to make ends meet. To assist families at or below that poverty level, who have been laid off during this time, or just have fallen on hard times, the Community Development Department of the City of Leavenworth is proposing to take $35,000 from this Housing Trust Fund account and assign those funds to Catholic Charities of Northeast Kansas to assist families with rent, mortgage, or utilities up to $500 per household. Catholic Charities is listed by the city as the first point of contact for housing assistance, so funding this agency is in keeping with our current operations. Staff has developed a set of guidelines to be used in administering these funds, a copy of which is attached to the packet tonight. The Housing Trust Fund was created from funds recaptured from the Community Development Block Grants, or loans where the residents did not fulfill the requirements of the funds as stated in the lien agreements. The federal government regulations state that an entitlement community, which is the city, meaning we receive funds directly from the federal government, is able to retain the funds and determine the use, as long as the amount is less than $25,000 per year. The city determined to set up a Housing Trust Fund with the recaptured monies and assist those outside the HUD guidelines in other housing situations. There is currently approximately $50,000 in the Housing Trust Fund, and it is proposed to leave $15,000 in the Trust Fund for loans, grants, for other outside HUD guidelines, in addition to the $35,000 being assigned to Catholic Charities of Northeast Kansas. As part of the CARES Act recently passed by Congress in response to the COVID-19 crisis, the City of Leavenworth was allocated $201,489 in additional CDBG funds to meet specific needs related to the crisis. Those funds are separate from the funds that we were talking about related to the Housing Trust Fund, and staff is currently working with HUD representatives to develop a strategy and a program for the deployment of those funds. These funds from the Housing Trust Fund, we would be able to get to Catholic Charities very quickly, and they would be able to put them to use in the community for those needing rent, or utility, or mortgage assistance. So, it is recommended that the Commission approve the transfer of those funds to the Catholic Charities for the uses that I have laid out. If you have any questions, myself or Planning and Community Development Director Julie Hurley could answer those questions.
Any questions?
This is Commissioner Bowder, I just have a comment. I think this is very important, I think this is good. Working with United Way, I dear, I get calls all the time, and the most calls I get are about rent assistance. There's so many people in our community that have never had to ask for help before, and it's very difficult. So, I definitely support the move to transfer $35,000 or to Catholic Charities, and when the Community Development Block Grant money comes in, that, that, you know, would help us well, so thank you.
Any other comments from my fellow commissioners? I 100% support Commissioner Bowder's comments, and just say that it is very timely, and I'm glad these funds are here, and that we can put them, put them to work at a very needy time for many of our citizens in the City of Leavenworth. Any other questions or comments from, from my fellow commissioners? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'm Mayor, Commissioner Leonhard, I move to approve the authorization of the transfer of $35,000 from the Housing Trust Fund to CCNEKS to be used for families at or below 150% of the poverty guideline who have lost employment during the COVID-19 period from March 18 forward. Any funds remaining 15th will be returned to the city.
Can I have a second?
Second, Commissioner Bowder.
Commissioner Bowder has seconded the motion from Commissioner Leonhard. We will begin voting with Commissioner Preisinger.
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder?
Aye.
Commissioner Leonhard?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson? An aye as the mayor voted aye, the ayes have it, the vote is five to zero, so we've approved this particular agenda item and the transfer of $35,000 from the Housing Trust Fund to Catholic Charities of Northeast Kansas.
This is Julie Hurley, Planning Director. Again, I just wanted to make a quick note that our plan is to get a check cut to Catholic Charities as soon as possible, hopefully this week if we can, so that they can start getting those funds out as soon as possible.
Okay. And was Ms. Mary Dwyer, was she kind of the point person on this?
Yes, this was her, yeah, her brainchild, when she got this put together.
I think they're very good, and I appreciate her initiative, and I also enjoyed reading, and we won't get into it now, but that, that program of instruction, that letter about homeowners assistance program policy, because I hadn't seen that before, but we've talked about it during previous years when we've talked about the CDGB funds, I think, so I did find that very educational. Next is Land Exchange.
Go back to the.
Okay, let's go back, let's go back to Review and Assessment of Dangerous Structures. Ms. Hurley?
Okay, I think Taylor was able to get the screen shared, is everybody able to see the slideshow?
Commissioner Leonhard, can you see it?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so again, these are back on our list of potential demo properties, so I'll just run through these briefly. Again, if you have any questions or comments, as we're going through these related to individual properties, go ahead and speak up. The first property is 109 Allen Street, this is a single-family house that we are looking at. Okay, there are my controls, okay. Oh, and just one other note, any of these properties that we're looking at, we have verified that these are vacant, we never consider properties that are occupied for our demolition list. Next property is 407 North 20th Street, this is a single-family house. That's a view of the back of the property. Next property is 1033 O Sage, this is a detached garage only.
But you go, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute.
Yep.
Okay, the one on 20th Street, they've been cleaning up the front yard, and I noticed, I was looking at the dates on the pictures here, and they're like from 2019. Are these going to be updated, or?
Yeah.
I didn't go around the back, went to the front.
Sure, a lot of these properties, we have older pictures, just because we've been dealing with code violations on these for a number of years. And so, just in looking at the pictures put in the slideshow, we're just trying to get kind of the best, clearest view of some of these, kind of depending on the time of year that we go out, the view can be, can be a little bit different. So, any of these properties, you know, we've been dealing with them for a number of years, so that's why we're going to have different dates on these.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Hurley.
Yeah.
Commissioner Bowder, on this property at 407 North 20th, I think the condition of the building that was taken here six, eight months ago is probably even worse than it is now, but I know the neighbor, the neighbor had been kind of taking care of the property, trying to clean it up a little bit.
Okay.
Distract as much from his property.
Got it.
The owner of this property has done absolutely nothing.
Got it, thank you.
Yep, and that's a good point, we do run into that occasionally with vacant properties where the neighbors will just sort of take over, at least mow it and clean up the yard, so it, it doesn't have as big, big of an impact on their properties. The next property that we started is 1033 O Sage, again, this is a detached garage only. Next one is 1152 Randolph, this is another detached garage only. And just a, a note, on some of these properties where it's just a detached garage or a shed, the primary structure may or may not be occupied. When we're just looking at a detached structure, we don't really consider if it's occupied or not, so that is just kind of a note on that. It's another view. Okay, the next one is another, this is 1186 Randolph. On the packet, it was listed as a single-family house and shed, it is actually just the detached shed behind the house. Those are both views of that shed. Number six on your packet, 1320 Spruce, after we put this packet out, we were taking another look at some of these properties, staff has decided to take 1320 Spruce off of the list. This property does have an active permit. It's been, it's had a number of property maintenance violations over the last several years, and work had stopped on this property, they had taken care of the front of it, the rear of the property is, is kind of in a state of disarray, and they, they had stopped for, for quite a long period of time, and so that was the reason we'd put it back on there. They have reactivated their permit and have started work back up, so staff would not feel comfortable putting that forward for demolition at that point. So, I did not put pictures of that in the, in the presentation, just so we're not kind of putting that out there.
Into your final PowerPoint, okay.
Yeah.
Got it. Any, any questions on 1320 Spruce from fellow commissioners?
No.
Okay.
The next one, 315 Sheridan, we are also taking this one off, just because the property owner, since we put this list together, has come in and got a demo permit themselves, and they intend to take that house down within the next week or two, so we do not need to have that on our list.
Okay.
There was a trap hole at 315 Sheridan this afternoon, so maybe they are staying for.
Yeah, I think, I think they're actually, this is one, we, we can kind of tell when they're serious about moving quickly, and this one, we felt pretty comfortable that they were ready to move on it. So, that's good to hear they have equipment out there.
Okay.
The next one is 519 Marshall, this is a single-family house.
That is, I would like to see what that looks like on the inside, but that's a shame because it's such a big old historic house.
I agree with Commissioner Bowder, this is a, could be a beautiful home, I would guess it's 130 to 140 years old, and I'm hoping because of this action, somebody will come in and put the money in to it to fix it up. It could be fixed up and be beautiful, it's in a nice neighborhood, but if they're not, it has to be taken down, it is a cancer in that neighborhood, it's horrible.
Yeah, it is certainly our hope with a lot of these, that someone will come and fix it up, if not the owner.
Just, just a quick reminder from my fellow commissioners, just state your name before you, before you chime in, I like everybody chiming in, but just state your name, I don't want to get in trouble with our city attorney, so.
Comments about the house of 519 Marshall?
Right. Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Hurley.
The next item on your list, number nine, 1016 Second Avenue, staff has elected to take this one off the list as well. Recently, within the last couple of weeks, the property owners have come in, it has changed hands, and the new owners have come in and started obtaining permits and started work on that, so staff feels confident that this is going to move forward to be improved, so we are taking number nine, 1016 Second Avenue off of your list.
Okay.
Mr. Commissioner Preisinger, can you move, okay, there you move, the picture's got it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so the next one that we're looking at for demolition is 1612 West 7th Street, this is a single-family house. There's a view of the rear of it. The next property is 1914 West 17th Street, and this is another single-family house. Next property is 306 North 3rd Street, it's a single-family house. The next property is 420 Ottawa Street, it's a single-family house. The next property.
Do you think that noise is from somebody who's not muted, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, could, could my fellow commissioners just check to make sure that you're muted? Because there is some, there's some feedback here that each time we change to the next slide, so if you just check on that, I'd appreciate it. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, you're good, I think they got it. The next property is 504 Miami Street, this is a single-family house. View of the rear of the property. Next property is 513 Lawrence Avenue, this is a single-family house. Next property is 515 North 5th Street. Apologize, I listed this as a single-family house, this is actually a multifamily building, this is a side view of it. There's a view of the rear.
Yes.
This is Commissioner Bowder, it, it looks like the back end is falling off of it.
Yes, and that had previously.
Would you demolish the whole building, or just make sure the back is taken off? Because it looks like the building doesn't look bad, it's just that thing on the back.
Yeah, it's our understanding that really the entire thing would need to come down, this is one of those cases where it's, doesn't quite look as bad in pictures as it actually is, and this has been cited, in particular that back portion, and so we have had conversations with the property owner about it, and they have no interest in repairing it.
Mrs. Hurley.
You don't have a front view of this, I drove by.
Uh, I.
And it is in terrible shape. The picture makes it, is. And it is in terrible shape. The picture makes it, is kind of a glamour shot of it, in my opinion, compared to what it actually looks like. And with the history on this property, we've got to get people to move. Either fix it or it's got to be taken down because there's no future in it as it is.
This is Hurley, this is Commissioner Leonhard. Is that, uh, is that like an apartment complex or just?
Yeah, it was, it was used as a multifamily housing structure. I'm not sure exactly how many units were in there, but it was, yeah, multifamily.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from Ms. Hurley on this particular property, 515 North 5th Street? If not, we'll go to the next one?
Yeah, the next one is 525 Pawnee Street. This is a single-family house and shed that's on the property.
This is Commissioner Bowder. Was this one, I, I, I remember this house from before. Is this, it looks like, this looks like a house that was on this list five years ago.
It may have been, and I, I don't have all that information right in front of me right now, but we do sometimes have that happen where properties are taken off of a demolition list because that property owner comes in and makes statements that they'll fix it up and, and is convincing, and then it, it doesn't happen. So when this comes back for a public hearing, we will have all of that information. So any of these properties that may have been on a demolition list before, that will be noted, how many violations they've had, all of that background information will be given to you when we have the public hearings.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on this particular property, 525 Pawnee Street? If not, we'll go to the next one?
Next one is 701 South 2nd Street. This is a single-family house. Next one is 708 Kiowa Street. This is a single-family house. This one is 714 Kiowa. It's a single-family house. And from the rear view, you can tell there has been a fire there and has not been made to be secure. You can see that some of that plywood has been pulled off. Next is 718 Dakota. This is a single-family house and a detached garage. It's a view of the garage. The next one is 824 Osage Street. This is a single-family house and a detached garage. That's the garage for that house. The next one is 836 Potawatomi Street. This is a single-family house. Next is 934 Ottawa Street. This is a single-family house. And our final one is 719 North 9th Street. This is a detached garage only. Another view of that garage. So again, as I mentioned before, pending consensus by the city commission to move forward with the list of dangerous structures as we've proven, presented here. Staff will prepare a resolution to set a public hearing for the structures. Tentatively, the resolution will be placed on the city commission agenda for the May 26th, 2020 city commission meeting, with the public hearing anticipated to take place in July. Prior to approval of that resolution, staff will prepare a remediation agreement for each property. And that will list out individual steps that would need to be taken to bring the property into code compliance. We will make contact with the property, property owners. They will have a chance to meet with us, talk with us, review that remediation agreement, talk about any repairs that would need to be made, and start taking steps to make those repairs prior to the public hearing in July. So that, that will give them plenty of time to at least start making a good dent in repairs on these properties if they intend to do so. So staff would recommend consensus of the list of dangerous structures as presented to be formally placed on a list for public hearing for review and consideration for resolution of demolition. So the list would be as presented, taking away number six, 1320 Spruce, number seven, 315 Sheridan, and number nine, 1016 Second Avenue.
Julie, can you mention the land bank?
Yep, oh, sorry about that. One mention too, we have been talking about establishing a land bank to take some properties that are vacant but maybe not eligible for demolition that could be turned around and put back into productive use. So as part of this process, with our staff identifying properties for demolition, we have identified a total of five properties that we feel would be good candidates for a land bank. So we are still working towards getting that established. There will have to be some public hearings to get that set up with the commission, I believe. So we are still working towards that. Hopefully, we can get that going as quick as possible. So we do have a list of five properties that as soon as we have the land bank up and going, we have those five properties to look at getting into the land bank to hopefully get those turned around and back into use for folks.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, this is Paul Kramer, city manager again. I would encourage any commissioners, any people in the audience, if these properties are in your neighborhood and if you feel strongly about them being on this property, to please reach out to your commissioner, to staff. We have these public hearings and I think it's always important for the neighborhood to buy into the action that the city is attempting to make for blight removal. So if anybody has reached out to you, please make them aware that the process is now started and they should follow it so they can be involved in it. This is their, these are their neighborhoods, so I think it's a good thing to be involved in.
This is Mayor Griswold. I have a question on those five properties that may be considered for the land bank. Those properties are separate from the list we went over today, correct?
Correct. This is Julie Hurley. Again, those properties are separate from this. We did not include their addresses or pictures. Just again, because we don't want to start putting those addresses out there since we haven't formally identified them for anything like that.
And the only other comment I'll have, I think it's a very, very good list. It was 25 structures, either a house or a detached garage or shed. Ms. Hurley's talked about taking three off of this list or have a list of 22, and I think they're all very, very valid and appropriate candidates. And so that's my two cents with respect to this particular agenda item. Do, do any of my fellow commissioners have any other comments or questions before I ask for a consensus?
This is Commissioner Pricinger.
Go, go ahead, Commissioner Pricinger.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, fellow commissioners, I've reviewed every one of these houses within the last 48 hours. And I completely agree with Ms. Hurley's actions on these. And I, for the public and for the other commissioners, it's not our intention to demolish each one of these houses. It's our intention for the owners of these houses to bring it up to a community standard. But if they are not willing to bring it up to a community standard in a reasonable amount of time, our only option is to demolish. Every one of these properties is a horrible cancer on their neighborhood. We will hear, people will come in when we have the first public hearing. I doubt that we'll get that many people to the public hearing, but thereafter, they'll start coming in, so I didn't know about this. I didn't know about this. Or they'll have a coronavirus excuse. I am telling you, these houses, the condition they're in now, have been dilapidated, have been abandoned for at least five, three to five years. It's horrible. So I just want all the commissioners to be advised. We may hear some stories, but we, what we need to see from some of these owners, some of these property owners, is some action rather than a story. And they, they are being put on notice now, and this process is, as we know, is a long and deliberate one. So if, if any of you are owners that are listening to this meeting and you see your property, I sure hope you plan on either make a move and come move very quickly and get these things taken care of.
Any other comments from my fellow commissioners on this particular agenda item before I ask for a consensus?
Commissioner Wilson here.
Commissioner Wilson, go ahead.
Sure, go ahead.
Commissioner Wilson, go ahead.
For Ms. Julie, don't know if you can answer, uh, the historical property. Just say, uh, the owner doesn't step up to the plate. Is there a possibility we can add that to the list with the land bank? The list of other properties?
I think he was referring to the, the more historic structure. It, it, can you clarify, Commissioner Wilson? You broke up just a, a bit.
Okay, yes, yes. Uh, speaking in regards to the, the historical structure, of the Commissioner Pricinger and Commissioner Bowder we're speaking about, have been.
Commissioner Pricinger, 519 Marshall, I think is the one you're referring to, Commissioner Wilson.
Correct. And so just say if the homeowner refuses to make the repairs, is there a possibility we can add this to the list of land banks?
Potentially, we, that, I mean, I, without knowing any further details on the actual structure and the property, it, it could be a possibility.
You can just come check it out. And I think it's a good question, and if you could just check it out, Ms. Hurley, and then just come back and let us know when it's on a future meeting.
And as, as part of our demolition process, we do have environmental reviews conducted on all these properties. And that involves a, a third-party contractor that is able to gain access to the insides of the buildings. And so when we have that environmental assessment done, we're able to get a lot better picture of the inside of the structure. And as, as I'm sure you're all aware, it, the inside of these properties may look a whole lot different from the outside in terms of damage and, and kind of the state that they're in. So yeah, it, it could, it could be a possibility.
Yeah. Commissioner Wilson, this is David Waters. I'd add that, you know, one of the other wrinkles on that is, you know, this is really more of a, a maintenance, getting rid of, you know, dangerous conditions and such. A separate issue could be to the extent land can be added to a land bank controlled by the city, whether it's through a tax foreclosure or foreclosure, if, you know, there, there are costs of demolition that are assessed against the property that then is recoverable by the city through acquiring that property, through that closure. So it's, it's a little bit of a, of a different wrinkle. So there's, there's, that would have to go through before, you know, even if we establish a land bank of getting title to property in the name of the city. That generally require a foreclosure, a tax sale of some kind of that, to that degree, or, or a donation of it to the land bank. Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Ms. Julie.
Commissioner Leonhard, did you have any comments or questions?
Yes, I did. Mrs. Hurley, Commissioner Leonhard, most of these structures, or I'm going to say all of these structures, have had prior code violations, I'm guessing?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Ms. Commissioner Bowder, any final comments or questions from you?
Sorry, no other comments.
Okay. Okay, so I think we've all had a chance to, to weigh in, and so I'm going to ask, be a little more structured about the consensus. So we'll, I'm going to ask, see whether we have a consensus to move forward as Ms. Hurley has described this particular agenda item for us. And so I'm going to begin with Commissioner Pricinger.
Uh, yes, I'm not a vote. Uh, you have my, I feel we should move forward on these properties.
Commissioner Bowder?
Yes.
Commissioner Leonhard?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
And myself as the mayor, yes, I agree with the consensus to move forward. And so I appreciate the, the work that staff has done on this particular agenda item. Good work, good list. And it is part of a deliberate process, and we look forward to the future steps. Next is resolution. No, we've already done that. Next is land exchange agreement with USD 453.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, Paul Kramer, city manager, speaking. At the August 20th, 2019 study session, the city commission reviewed a proposal from the Leavenworth Unified School District, USD 453, related to city property at 10th Avenue Park. The proposal made by the school district would grant city property at that park west of the Warren Middle School football field, just on that west side, to the district for use as a future baseball and or softball complex. Discussions at the meeting indicated that if the proposal would be accepted, the city would expect a portion of USD property in return. Specifically, the city maintained but USD 453 owned property known as Brewer Park. I think a lot of residents don't realize that Brewer Park out by David Brewer Elementary is school district property. The city leased that property from the school district and has been operating it as a city property, but we do not own that property. I think it's also important to note that the school district does not have a baseball and softball complex. Baseball and softball games are played at Sportsfield, the Sportsfield Complex, that, that's the city property. And they are looking to have a facility and a complex that is on par with their peers and competitors, both in their district and in the area, going forward in the future. In the intervening months from the presentation, Superintendent Mike Roth and I have remained in touch and continued discussions. During the process, the city commission and USD 453 school board have been regularly informed about the status of the proposal. And additionally, I personally have made continual efforts to provide information to the Leavenworth Soccer Association who uses this area as practice soccer fields. This is not the game field complex. This is a portion of their practice complex. Those efforts have included in-person meetings and more recently, multiple email exchanges with two current board members. To the best of my knowledge, that's been shared with all existing board members with Leavenworth Soccer Association. Again, that is area used by or granted by the city to LSA for practice, subject to an agreement, a separate agreement the city has with LSA for use of those fields for practice. Recently, a contract for the land exchange has been finalized. Survey of the property is completed and the agreement is before the commission for consideration. A couple notes on approving, there's a couple things that have to happen before it's fully executed. Outlined in Kansas statute, KSA 12-1301 sets aside a public protest period, and that's related to any time city property or park property is exchanged or sold. And then also adoption by the USD 453 school board. They haven't heard this side of it yet. The city is essentially going first. City staff, city council, David Waters, who is present for the meeting tonight, along with USD 453 council, drafted the agreement and have come to what you have before you. This wouldn't take effect even after all the approvals until the end of the current LSA contract this summer. And as a reminder, if you don't know, LSA has canceled their spring season, so this isn't impacting anything that's happening right now. If you have any questions, both Mr. Waters and myself are available for any questions you may have.
Fellow commissioners, do any of you have a question or comment about this particular agenda item?
Mr. Kramer, did you want to mention the exhibits?
Oh, right. The city clerk, Carla Williamson, reminds me that in the copy that's in the packet, you'll have, the exhibits are slightly off. We do have the corrected. There's one exhibit missing, which is the description of the school district property. So that's the legal description of Brewer Park. So we have that as exhibit A in the contract that'll be executed and signed by the mayor should the commission approve. And then what is exhibit A in your packet or in the packet online is now exhibit B. So that's just all the, the stuff that's already included in the packet. That is all the survey data from the area west of 10th Avenue Park. The city will maintain an easement for the trail that runs on the south portion of that property.
Mr. Kramer, this is Mayor Griswold. Mr. Kramer, so the, the practice feels, will the Leavenworth Soccer Association be able to use a part of David Brewer Park for practices, do we think, or in, in the future?
Yeah, our intent is to continue to work with the Leavenworth Soccer Association to provide them adequate practice fields in city parks, sort of of their choosing.
Okay.
There's quite a bit of property still at 10th Avenue Park that they currently use that will, that they can continue to use. In years past, they have used a half a dozen locations throughout the city for practices. It's only been somewhat recently that all the practices have consolidated to 10th Avenue. So we will meet with them and decide what works best for them. 10th Avenue, I know they do football practice out there, so it's a good flat area that can accommodate. And it also has restrooms, so I think that may be an attractive location. But we'll work with LSA to come up with adequate soccer practice space for them.
Okay, very good. Uh, that was the only question that I really had, other than very, um, I know our city attorney and whoever the attorney is for the USD four, five, three have, um, written this contract, I found it pretty easy to, to read through, very well organized, so, um, if there are no further questions or comments on this particular agenda item, I will entertain a motion, um, on this particular agenda item. It's, it's, uh, it's the very beginning of that, in terms of the commission action, um, I can make the motion if, if necessary. I'll go ahead and move.
Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and move that the commission, I move to approve, um, the acceptance of the contract that has, uh, been discussed, which, which, um, it will involve a land swap between USD four, five, three and the city of Leavenworth, as has been described by the city manager over the last, uh, five minutes or so. That's my motion, is there a second?
Commissioner Priceinger, second.
Okay, there's a motion and second on this particular agenda item, which in general is this land swap we just, uh, have discussed. Uh, we will begin voting with Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Commissioner Leonhard?
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder?
Aye.
Commissioner Priceinger?
Aye.
An aye as the mayor vote aye, the ayes have it, the motion carries, five to zero, uh, good rundown, and, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm glad we are where we are now, cause this, we've been really dealing with this particular important, uh, issue for about eight or nine months, I think, right? Okay, good. Good progress, um, next, consider bid for Independence Court Bank Stabilization Project.
Mr. Merritt Commission, Paul Kramer, City Manager, speaking. I believe we also have Mike McDonald, the Public Works Director, on the line. However, we've all been dealing with this project for quite a while, it's a, it's a pretty simple bid award, so, um, I will go through this and, and we'll be able to answer most any question that you have. Staff was contacted by the owner of the property at fourteen twenty-one Independence Court in August of twenty eighteen. Uh, just for those of you not familiar with where this is on Independence Court, this is just south of Limit and just west of South Fourteenth Street, um, on Independence Court. The concern was over the continued erosion of property along the creek and movement of the branch of Five Mile Creek toward the adjoining properties. Our review by city staff determined that the top of the creek bank had moved twenty to thirty feet in the last twenty years toward the houses on Independence Court. The location also, and I think more importantly, has a sanitary sewer line at risk, um, between the bank erosion and the homes in the area. The continued erosion of the creek bank stability issues provided an increasing risk of significant sanitary sewer breaks that would require action to repair. The City Commission approved a design contract with Water Resource Solutions to design the project, um, and identified in the area, completed in the study by Water Resource Solutions. Construction drawings were completed, required permits obtained, and easements acquired in late twenty nineteen. The project was bid, bids were opened on April first, twenty twenty. And the low bid, uh, from that process was from Kissick Construction for three hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. Um, the engineer's base bid or base estimate was five hundred and forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six. Uh, for reference, Kissick is the contractor that is currently working on the Thornton Street project, uh, we know them, um, they do very good work. Um, they're significantly lower than a lot of the other bids. Um, there's no real reason for this, it fits into their schedule well, it's kind of work that they're good at and they know how to do. Um, and so we feel confident with the base bid that meets everything that we expect from the project. The work would expect to begin in mid-July to mid-August this year, and can be completed in a hundred and fifty calendar days. Funding for the project is through the stormwater utility fee implemented by the City Commission, and inspection work will be a combination of city staff and limited contract inspection services from Water Resource Solutions. I want to throw one, uh, I, I don't think it's a wrinkle, but one piece of information you should know. This project is part of, uh, two projects that are gonna be, uh, paid for by debt financing. The city is going to issue bonds to pay for this project, and the second in Chestnut Large Drainage Project. Um, myself and the Finance Director Ruby Moline have been watching the bond market, the municipal bond market, and it's very volatile right now. So we'll have a decision to make here in the next thirty to sixty days about if we can issue those bonds for this project and second at Chestnut. Um, we're confident, uh, we feel confident right now that that will happen, but we don't know what's gonna happen in the bond market. If something happens, we would then potentially have to delay this project, uh, but I just wanted to let you know. Uh, we, we fully intend to do it this year, um, but that could throw a little bit of a wrench in the plans. So the staff would recommend that the City Commission approve the low bid submitted by Kissick Construction for Independence Court Bank Stabilization Project in the amount of three hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars.
Any questions or comments from my fellow commissioners on this particular agenda item? This is, this is Mayor Griswold, the only, the only thing I would comment, uh, in terms of, a, as far as the engineer's estimate, that, that does concern me a little bit, but they have, this particular company's got a very, very good track record, and I noticed that they're able to, um, their bid in terms of mobilization and, uh, clearing, rubbing, and site preparation were well below what the engineer's estimate was, and so that, that's something where they're, they, they must have their processes and procedures down, and they're able to econom, economize and, and get the work done for, um, significantly less, uh, cost than was part of our engineer's estimate, so I just, I just point that out as a, as something that I saw here in the spreadsheet. So are there any other comments or questions? If not, I will entertain a mo, I'm sorry, was there somebody?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Priceinger, I'm just, uh, wondering, Mr. McDonald, has anything you'd like to weigh in on this?
Yep.
Why he thinks bids are across, uh, so.
Sure.
Uh, a big discrepancy, not necessarily discrepancy of differences, and, uh, why it might be a little bit different than our engineer's estimate.
Mr. McDonald?
I think, um, I'm Mike McDonald here. I, I believe that this is, fits into their schedule, uh, very well. In addition, uh, they, uh, they do this kind of work. Conversations with our other contractors are, they're very busy, some of them had asked us if we could, uh, find a way to delay the start of the construction, to make sure that, uh, you know, they were in a better competitive, uh, position, and at least one contractor did bid the project that had told us if, uh, that they would not be able to without, uh, the delay. So my, my belief is the contractors are generally busy, and this is a good fit for Kissick and the, their people.
Okay, any questions or comments from Mr. McDonald? And, uh, I mean, we're never averse to saving money as long as the quality's there, and, uh, we'll, that, 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 I guess is my final question, this is Mayor Griswold speaking. Quality assurance, Mr. McDonald, performed, uh, by your, your folks, plus maybe a little bit by Water Resource Solutions, is that?
That, that's correct, there are some technical things that need to be inspected by, uh, the Water Resource Solutions people,
Okay.
uh, to make sure that they are in fact constructed correctly, but the vast majority of the project will be inspected by state forces.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion on this particular agenda item?
Mayor, this is, uh, Commissioner Leonhard. I move to approve the low bid submitted by Kissick Construction for the Independence Court Bank Stabilization Project in the amount of three hundred and sixty-two thousand.
Is there, is there a second?
Commissioner Priceinger, a second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, on this particular agenda item. We are going to begin voting with Commissioner Priceinger.
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder?
Aye.
Commissioner Leonhard?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson? An aye as the mayor vote aye, uh, the ayes have it, the vote is five to zero. So we've approved this particular agenda item, and, uh, the low bid submitted by Kissick Construction for the Independence Court Bank Stabilization Project. So, thank you, Mr. McDonald, and, uh, we look forward to that. That work, I think it's gonna begin, uh, well, you know, hopefully everything with respect to the bonding will go well, but if, if that goes well sometime in the middle of the summer, correct? I think so, right?
Yes.
Okay. No problem, um, next is first consideration, ordinance chapter, uh, ordinance amending chapter twenty, Article Two of the City of Leavenworth Code of Ordinances, and this is for fire prevention and protections, and Article Two Fire Code for the City of Leavenworth.
Mr. Merritt Commission, this is Paul Kramer, the City Manager. The next, uh, two items include about, uh, ten codes that the city uses that we are updating, this is part of a City Commission goal-setting item that's been on the goals, uh, City Commission Goals for about two years, to modernize all of our codes, bring them up to the international codes that are used by, currently by contractors, by builders, um, and throughout, uh, much of the region. Um, you get sort of behind sometimes, I think, our fire code, the first one here, uh, is from two thousand to two thousand sixteen International Fire Code, so it just updates with best practices, um, and modernizes. On, on December third, the Fire Chief Gary Birch and Fire Marshal Andy Brooks presented to the City Commission the adoption of the fire code, the recommendation of Chief Birch and, uh, Fire Marshal Brooks, if you'll remember at the time, was the exclusion of chapter ten, which related, um, to existing buildings, uh, single and multi-station smoke alarms. Again, also, uh, I remember the chief that night pointed out that the state of Kansas does not allow fire, uh, sprinkler requirements in single-family homes anyway. And I also want to remind the commission that, um, this item brought up a, a large discussion on outdoor burning. This is, that is not part of the code, as a reminder, that was the fire department administrative policy, so we've already accepted that. That was dealing with the two different periods of, uh, times of the year of the burn, that dealt with the burn barrel issue, so that was a separate issue. Um, so, um, this is just simply updating the fire code that we use for our building regulations with the City of Leavenworth. So it's on first consideration tonight, approval will move it to second consideration.
Any questions or comments from fellow commissioners on this particular agenda item before I ask for a consensus?
This is the city clerk, if I could just make one comment, um, on page eighty-two of your packet, page three of the ordinance, it was brought to my attention this evening that a word was left out in the, um, three oh seven point three, that'll be corrected before it comes back on, uh, final consideration and approval. Um, it should say open burning has not, um, when a permit for open burning has not been obtained, and the word not was left out of there. So that kind of makes a big change in that whole paragraph, so that will be inserted before it comes back for second consideration.
Any other comments or questions on this particular agenda item? And we're gonna, we're, we need a consensus on this, correct?
Yes.
So I'm gonna, um, ask, well, I'm gonna go around the horn, and we'll begin with Commissioner Wilson to see, uh, and I'll just ask each of the commissioners if, if they are, um, is, are they in approval of a consensus for us to move forward on this particular item? Uh, Commissioner Wilson?
Uh, to me, yes.
Okay, Commissioner Leonhard?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowder?
Yes.
Commissioner Priceinger?
Yes.
And I as the mayor, yes, definitely in favor of moving forward and agree with the consensus to move forward on this particular ordinance, and, uh, we'll deal with it at, uh, some, on a motion basis, approval, approval basis at some future meeting. Um, next is first consideration, ordinance chapter ten, uh, Buildings and Construction of the City of Leavenworth Code of Ordinances.
Mr. Merritt Commission, as you'll recall, at the, that same December third meeting, the Chief Building Inspector Hal Burdette and the Director of Planning and Community Development Julie Hurley discussed the adoption of new international and national codes, those codes include the two thousand eighteen International Building Code, the two thousand eighteen International Residential Code, the two thousand eighteen Existing Building Code, the two thousand eighteen Fuel Gas Code, the two thousand eighteen Mechanical Code, the two thousand eighteen Plumbing Code, the two thousand eighteen International Swimming Pool and Spa Code, the two thousand seventeen National Electrical Code, and the two thousand eighteen International Property Maintenance Code. This is another, uh, example where the city has been using, um, uh, codes that, uh, have now have newer versions available. So we're trying to get on the same, uh, updated codes, uh, that our developers, builders, uh, in the development community is using. I'm gonna go ahead and ask if, since we have Mr. McDonald, uh, here, if he'll go through, there's a few things in here, um, that staff has noted, uh, that, Mike, if you want to go through the sections that are applicable to you, and Julie, if you have anything on this that you'd like to say, um, uh, please, please do so now.
Okay, uh, uh, McDonald here, uh, I've got Hal Burdette, uh, standing socially distant here, if we have detailed questions that I can't answer. Uh, this is, uh, basically, as the city manager explained, cleaning up loose ends and bringing the codes up to current codes. We did go through study sessions with the commission, and we've reviewed this with, uh, contractors and builders, developers in the area. And there were a couple of things that came about after the study sessions that we had, uh, with the commission. Uh, uh, first is, I just wanted to clarify that the, the energy efficiency requirements that were in the, uh, the code, uh, for two thousand eighteen, uh, our opinion is they are much too complicated and, uh, more strict than we believe is reasonable for our community, and we are going to continue our, uh, operations under the requirements of the current code, the two thousand six code, which has worked well for everyone. Uh, there were some changes, uh, that we discussed with, uh, builders, essentially, uh, related to how townhouses and duplexes were constructed for fire ratings. There, um, kind of two things, one is on, uh, two-family units or duplexes, cleaned up some language on fire separation between the two building halves. So if one is damaged, uh, particularly if they're owned by two separate owners, if one half gets damaged, uh, if it's, doesn't damage the other half, it's a lot easier to get the repairs, uh, going. Uh, we have had instances where duplexes have been damaged, uh, one owner was interested in moving ahead, and the other, uh, was unable to for an extended period of time. Uh, the, uh, the other big change that we cleared up is that the requirements for automatic fire sprinkler systems exist for townhouses. Uh, we had it originally in the proposed changes to be for three or more attached units to be considered a sprinkler-required situation, and we have proposed that that would be moved up, uh, to a four or more unit townhouse with the, uh, requirement for sprinklers. The, uh, I think, uh, we made some other odds and ends of changes in there to more efficiently kind of process the paperwork, the practical side, uh, of the, of the code, codes that we inspect with our building inspectors. And, uh, if you have questions on those that I can't answer, I'll, I'll, I'll ask how to, uh, but I think the, uh, the, the primary changes were identified at the study sessions along with these additions.
Are there any, uh, before we, before I ask for a consensus on the part of the commission, are there any questions or comments for, from my fellow commissioners for Mr. McDonald? This, this is Mayor Griswold, I did have a question in terms of what you just mentioned about, um, a townhouse having three units versus four, uh, and so you, you know, you're going with the requirement for four units for the requirement for a sprinkler system. Is that, is that a correct understanding that I have, Mr. McDonald?
Yes, sir.
And what, what would be the, I mean, the rationale for going from the three to the four is, what's the rationale, I guess, is what I'm asking?
I think it was, uh, talking with the builders and developers that the, uh, as they do duplexes, uh, with the, uh, extreme fire protection systems that go from roof, uh, to the, to basement, uh, that it seemed, uh, a good breaking point to move that sprinkler system up one unit. Uh, there's, uh, basically, staff did not believe it was a detriment to public safety, and it was in a position to, uh, reduce costs for the typical size of units that we might see in Leavenworth, uh, that, that would be more affordable.
Okay. Um, fellow commissioners, any comments or questions on your part for Mr. McDonald? The only other comment I would have, once again, I thought it was well-written, who's the primary author here, is it Mr. Burdette? Or are you, Mr. McDonald, or both?
Uh, I, I could not hear the question, sir.
Oh, I was just saying, I, I thought it was pretty well-written for one of these dry type. dry type of codes, but I was wondering who the, the, the primary author, Mr. Burdette or you, or maybe, maybe Ms. Williams?
It was a collaborator.
Primarily Hal Burdette wrote this, the, the bones of it, and then we worked together with the city clerk's office to get the, the wording so it could be understood by us as well as others.
Well, I understood it, so you passed that, that hurdle. No, I think, I think, I think it's very well-written and for something that normally is pretty dry, but good job. And if there are no further questions or comments, we're going to go around the horn here and ask to see whether we have a consensus, and I am going to begin with Commissioner Price, Price.
Yes.
Miss Commissioner Bowder?
Yep.
Commissioner, yes. I, I'll take that as a yes, we're going to move forward. Commissioner Leonhard?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
And myself as the mayor, yes, I, and I am in favor, yes, for moving, moving forward. We have a consensus to move forward on this ordinance as part of a first consideration, so we'll see it back in front of the commission in the not-too-distant future. Thank you. I think that's it for, so now we are to the consent agenda and I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Leonhard for the consent agenda.
Okay, this is Commissioner Leonhard. I move to approve claims for March twenty-first, two thousand twenty through April tenth, two thousand and twenty, in the amount of one million, nine hundred and sixty-four thousand, nine hundred and sixty-one dollars and ninety-five cents. Net, net amount for payroll number seven, effective March twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty, in the amount of three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars and sixty-one cents, includes police and fire pension, in the amount of eleven thousand, eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars and thirty-six cents. And payroll number eight, effective April tenth, two thousand twenty, in the amount of three hundred and fifteen thousand, six hundred and three dollars and sixty-nine cents, no police and fire pension.
Is there a second?
Commissioner Wilson? Seconded.
Okay, good, there's a motion and a, and a second on this consent agenda. We are going to go around the horn and we'll vote first with Commissioner Wilson. Commissioner Leonhard?
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder?
Aye.
Commissioner Price?
Aye.
And aye is the mayor, vote aye. The ayes have it, the vote is five to zero, so we've approved the consent agenda as presented. That ends the agenda items for this evening's city commission meeting, so I'm going to go around the horn like we normally do and start with the city manager. Did you have anything for the good of the order?
Not unless there's any questions. I don't have anything tonight.
Commissioner Wilson, do you have anything?
Yes. Yeah, I just definitely wanted to say, I know many have been concerned and questioning when this is going to end. To be honest, I don't think we know, only God knows the time and easy control, but I would say be encouraged, be not afraid nor be dismayed. I know it's tough, I know it's challenging, but let us not focus on the things that are challenging, but let us look at the positive things, like the times that we're spending with our families and the memories that's being created. Let's continue to pray for one another, encourage one another, support one another. And most of all, thank you to everyone who has stepped up to the plate to help serve during this time. God bless.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. Commissioner Leonhard?
Yes, I do. Camaraderie is a spirit of friendship and community between two people or a group of people. This word comes to mind when thinking of healthcare workers. I commend them on their dedication, compassion, courage, and strength in today's crises, and for always and every day, for the selfless work that they do. They are true heroes. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Leonhard. Commissioner Price?
Yes, I'd like to echo what Commissioner Leonhard and Commissioner Wilson said, and also like to thank city staff, county staff, Mayor Griswold, and all the other entities, including the newspaper, have kept citizens apprised of the situation, how it's evolving. As Commissioner Wilson said, we don't know when this is going to end. We do have a, the order, I think, does end, end of April, sometime towards the end of April. We don't know if that's going to be extended or not. It's a trying time for everyone, but I, I think we're making the right decisions as, as evidenced by a number of people that have been afflicted and a number of people that have passed away because of this. It is a very, very serious situation. I've had a couple of questions, I'm sure the other commissioners have two, about our recycle center, the one located off Tenth Avenue and New Lawrence, or Lawrence Avenue, Tenth Avenue and Halterman in that area. As you know, that has been closed along with the other city centers, but we still have a recycle center at the transfer station located out on Gilman Road, and it does accept recycling of glass, paper, cardboard, plastic, Tuesday through Saturday from twelve o'clock to three forty-five. Recycling, very easy, take one car at a time, but they have plenty of room to stack cars. That is a facility that your tax dollars pay for, a little bit, it might be a little bit inconvenient compared to the other one, but it's not that inconvenient. So recycling is still available for all those that do need it. Like to just send some thanks out to all the people, Mr. McDonald's group, Public Works, and the other contractors that have been working on our street projects, the Thornton project, which is if it's going right on schedule, there's a lot of work, and as we all know, it's scheduled to be finished approximately in September timeframe. So I think we'll see the work from approximately Fifth Avenue and Maple West, probably starting within the next couple of months. You can drive that right now, but that will start being torn up. And special kudos to all the construction work on Tenth Avenue last year, as we know, that was a horrible piece of road from Michigan to approximately Byless, and they did tear it up and redo it. There were a lot of complaints, people saying they didn't do it right, it's going to fall apart every first winter. I've driven it many times, I drove it today, and it's very, very smooth, so an outstanding project, and the new materials, the new processes they use were, were excellent. I do have a question for Mr. Kramer. On Eisenhower Road is a little over five years ago that...
Mr. Commissioner Price, I think we've got a...
Little internet lapse, maybe.
Yeah, we'll give it about ten or fifteen more seconds. I think what Mr. Commissioner Price was going to talk about was just the fact that the Eisenhower Road project was one of three projects, I believe, that was approved by the citizens of the county about four or five years ago, and could you just give us a quick update in terms of what you've heard about, what may be next as far as that particular project?
Yeah, it's been a frustrating process, leading up to the extension of the twenty-year countywide sales tax, along with all economic development and infrastructure and some other items that were called out in that. There were three projects included that to be done in the county. The one in this part of the county was Eisenhower Road, essentially from the storage box or about Fourteenth Street all the way up to County Road Five. That project has been the subject of design delays, of delays by previous Board of County Commissioners trying to do different things with the design. There's been some utility relocation, there's been some staff turnover, so it's been a long frustrating process. I believe that we were expecting the project to go out to bid early this year. Obviously, that has not happened. I'm hoping that the county commission asks for an update on where that project is so the, the public can be aware when that might start, but as of right now, we don't have a start date, we don't, we don't, we certainly don't have a start date, we don't have a bid date at this time. If it goes too much longer, it'll be five years since the passage of the continuation of the fire years tax without that initial project even starting. I would mention that the other two projects that were called out have been completed.
Yeah, I think that we, I think we, I have an expectation that we're, we will hear something soon from the Board of County Commissioners. I know one of the things, and, you know, excuses a lot of times aren't worth much, but they did just recently, fairly recently hire new director of Public Works, and I, I think he's getting his hands around things and hopefully in the not-too-distant future, we'll find out what the plans are, hopefully to start that project later this year sometime. I mean, if we don't hear anything in the not-too-distant future, maybe we can consider sending a letter as a commissioner to the Board of County Commissioners to just see what the status is and just say that we're anxiously awaiting the beginning of that project. Let me see, Mayor Protem Bowder, anything from, from you, ma'am?
Yes, thank you for, to Commissioner Price for bringing up the recycling issue. I get, I've gotten several calls about that. I hope that the farmer's market, with the thing, you know, with, with this situation, you know, when you look at the news and you see them dumping milk and dumping all kinds of food, farmer's market, just like our grocery stores, provides a service to our community. They take food stamps for the low-income people, and I think they provide an essential service, and I hope they can find a way that they can distribute their, their produce to our community. I, I just hate to see that with what's been going on with the news with, with farmers dumping their produce. So, anyway, just, just some, some thoughts out to the farmer's market folks. We can work out something that they could, they could do safely and be able to distribute their food. Thank you.
Good, very good comment, and take it fully under consideration. I think on last, just a few things. First of all, I think the meeting went well tonight, particularly for the first meeting where we've really done using go-to meeting, and I know we commit, we did things remotely three weeks ago, but that was via telephone. This is a lot better to be able to see my fellow commissioners than them, me, I guess. So thank you for the city manager, and particularly for Mr. Taylor Tetter, the assistant city manager, who I think was the tech, the brains behind the technical aspects of this, and so kudos to him and getting us up and running, and as I said, very fortuitous in terms of the, the big four monitors we have in here so we can see one another and put the PowerPoint up so our citizens who are watching on Channel Two or, or Face, or FaceTime Live can actually see the information we're discussing. Facebook Live tomorrow, we really transitioned to Wednesdays where I have a Facebook Live Town Hall focused on COVID-19 health crisis and associated aspects or matters, and we'll do that tomorrow at eleven AM, so for people listening, I think it'll be our, will it be our fifth one? Fourth one, it'll be the fourth one, and I've found them good. I think we've had good participation looking at the analytics, so, and tomorrow we're going to have Mr. Jamie Miller, who's the health officer for the Leavenworth County. He's going to be our guest and he'll talk for ten or five, ten, fifteen minutes, and so citizens will have a chance to ask him questions, and so I just put that out there, eleven AM tomorrow. And then finally, I, I did get a call from, I can't remember his last name, but he's the Channel Five Weather and Traffic on-air personality in the morning for Channel Five in Kansas City, and he's going to do a little special on various cities in terms of what they're doing to maybe address the COVID-19 health crisis, and so he and I had a conversation for about ten or fifteen minutes today. So Leavenworth will be featured tomorrow at five and six AM, maybe forty-five seconds or a minute. If you're interested, if your sleep cycle is messed up like mine is, maybe you're up and you could want to listen to the, the brief report from this gentleman from Channel Five. I think that is about it. If there's no other comments or questions, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting.
So, Commissioner Bowder?
Is there a second?
Commissioner Price, you're a second.
Okay, I'm going to go around the horn, so we'll start with Commissioner Price on voting. Begin voting, please.
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder? Commissioner Bowder, is, do we have an aye?
Aye.
Okay. Commissioner Leonhard?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
And myself as the mayor, I vote aye. The ayes have it, motion carries, so we are adjourned for tonight. Thank you.